...to continue to thrive, to ask the school system to be able to provide. I can't hear trusting that we'll be protected. That mother trusted that her children would be protected. My mom trusted that I would be protected. But are we? I'm not for the Uber. After this, I'm gonna walk, walk, talk hard during the streets of Tempe. Will I be safe? Gracias.
And after that, we have Jamal Johnson. And after Jamal, we have John.
Hello, my name is Brian Whiting. I currently live in Phoenix, Arizona, which is obviously the deadliest police state in the country. I'm a walking statistic as a black man, one of the few here. And obviously, there's nobody here on your board that would [BLEEP] me. That's obvious. This means that I will be foreign to all of you. My life, anything that I do, anywhere I walk, and what I claim in my life, as well as my friends. Everybody here is here because of a deadly attack of somebody who was killed running away. Because more or less, according to the police officers, you know, he was a threat to society. I can't tell because your story keeps changing.
Right.
And I would really hope that you get it straight for the next time I can discuss this topic. Because the truth is out there in what you see. I've seen hunters do the same thing. They'll say something real quick, they stalk their prey, they take aim, and as it's running away, you shoot. Now, we're here as a collective, as a collective to try to make this stop. We want this all to end. You don't want to see another child dead, and I should hope you don't. But considering the policies that are put in place for you to protect anybody who is in the same profession as you, I feel that you should treat all of us the exact same way that you would treat an officer. And you should treat them the same way that you would treat us. So you shouldn't be protecting those in power because they are nothing but a suit, a uniform, a badge, and a gun, but you should not give them as much power as you do because they're supposed to uphold the law, not be above it. So anybody who winds up shooting an officer winds up getting investigated extremely hard. And I know you all got that. When will you treat us the exact same way? You have to treat us the same way as you treat them, they have to treat us the same way that they would treat themselves. That's the only way we're gonna wind up doing this differently. Because otherwise, I'm still gonna be a walking statistic, and I will still be the one more liable to be shot by them than you will. You have to realize also, we are here to protect everybody, including your own children. Your own children could have been the same ones that were shot, just like Antonio right in the back as a target, as an animal being run, running away from getting killed. Any one of your children, and guess what? We would still be here fighting for your children. But you have to, you have to hope that all that we're doing is trying to protect not just ourselves, not just the black and brown communities that are targeted by the deadliest, the deadliest... Why is this... I'm from Jersey. We are not like this. I lived in Brooklyn, New York. We are not like this. You should be angered, you should be loving your children and protecting them. I stood two feet away from a child who was shot by a Tempe officer, knowing, looking at his jeans as a teenager, Antonio Arce laying in his casket, and to look and stare at his face and memorize what it is for the rest of my life, knowing that under those clothes is a bullet hole stuck in between his back that was created to kill me at more of the rate, Latinos at more of the rate. And he just gets to go on vacation. If I get that honor to be able to do that, then maybe I should just buy a gun today. But I really don't want that choice, and I don't want to do that, nor do I want any of your children to go through any of that, including your kids. So please do something about your policies. Do something about that officer. Get him fired. Do whatever you can. You do not want to protect people like that, I swear on everything. If I ever saw a lawyer or anybody else who worked in a store, if you ever had somebody in your office who was stealing from you or did something badly, how many of you would sit there and protect them? How many would ever protect a bad employee? Well, why would you protect a bad employee if he did something so horrible, like he took the license for a 14-year-old, can't get his story straight, and you're still gonna pay him? You have to question your judgment, question who you are, because God doesn't see that uniform. Thank you.
And after that, we have John O'Neill. And after that, John O'Neill, we have Dan O'Neil.
Hey, my name is Jamal Johnson. I'm from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. I've been to many marches, protests, funerals, and family gatherings about especially young black and brown men that were being killed. I retired from the Marine Corps and the post office, and after doing that, I took to the streets because I got tired of seeing us get killed. I come here to support the family, support the community, and to say that I'm sorry that we still haven't done anything about this. It's really sad when I sit in the back and I watch, as I watch other council members in other cities and states do what they do, you know? And I say to myself, how many of y'all, after we get done here, wanna come out with us and talk and say, "Look, I wanna get involved"? Or you're just gonna go and go home, hug your kids all over the night. You know, it's really sad. And I'm a father, grandfather, and a great-grandfather. That's why I do what I do. I'm with an organization called Stop Killing Us. Simple as that. Just stop killing us, you know? Black and brown people need to live too. I'm tired of going to funerals. I'm tired of talking to families. I'm tired of going to the march that I do every year in Philadelphia to Washington, DC, to the Congress people, to the Justice Department, to the rest of that office. I go and I ask them every year, "What do you wanna do?" So when I come to see this thing here, which I heard about unfortunately, I said, "I wanna come out and support it." I don't know what it's gonna take, but all I'm gonna let you know is that in Philadelphia, we do things differently. One thing we do, we don't let you see. We go to your house, we go to where you eat, we go to where you hang out, we do the baseball games, and anywhere we find out you are, we're there. The motivation goes. And we've done that in a certain case, I only got about this one time, a young man named David Jones was shot in the back by a police officer while he was running. Officer power now. Police weren't doing anything about it. City Hall wouldn't do anything about it. But then, you know what? Some of us went to his house, made all kind of noise, went downtown, and we saw the mayor out on the street, and went and busted up his, uh, little, you know, publicity things that y'all do. We did whatever it took to get us in front of the camera to let people know that we weren't going anywhere. I'm not telling them to do this. I'm just saying. Thank you.
And then Dan O'Neil, after Dan O'Neil, John O'Neil.
I actually would like to take a moment of silence, and the reason for that is because coming here tonight and seeing all of you south of this podium, with this third division, I came to realize that I haven't seen one face here, south of this podium, attend any of Antonio's vigils, stand beside Antonio's family, make one public comment. But if my memory serves correctly, public comments could be made when the city of Tempe was killed on a fight? But we can't hear public comment when a child is killed under your protection and responsibility? How is that? So I do wanna take a moment of silence, and I hope each of you take that moment to reflect on that fact. If you made a comment about a death on a fight but cannot make a comment over a 14-year-old boy that is your responsibility, shame on you. Shame on you, every one of you. So let's take a moment of silence for Antonio Tony Arce, the 14-year-old boy that we are all here to honor tonight, at least north of this podium we are.
My name is Patti Serano. I'm an embedded member of this community for 10 years. I've driven to work every single day to work on campus. I am an ASU alum. I am a mother, and that's why I'm here tonight. I am a mom. I'm the mother of a 10-year-old Latino boy, and I'm the tia, or aunt, of several Latino boys of color. And I am concerned more than ever, more than ever. I'm here as a mom who believes in any vulnerability and the dignity of life that every child owns, no matter what the past of that child is, no matter the color of his skin. Every child is vulnerable, that is alive. Me having respect and dignity for life of any child means me coming here tonight, me sacrificing time. It's 8 o'clock, you don't think I'm a mom? I've been staring at the time. This is a sacrifice for me to be here tonight. I should be at home getting my kid ready for bed. But I'm not there because I'm standing in solidarity with a mom who is crying herself to sleep frantic. If you are a parent, I would be losing my mind right now if I was Antonio's mom. I don't know how Sandra is surviving, but she is because she has no other choice, and she is surviving to bring justice to her son, and we are all here with her. She may not be physically present, and I don't blame her for that because I can barely hold myself together right now, knowing that there's a child that's dead, again at the hands and responsibility of everybody south of this podium. I'm here with many of us from across the city, across the state, the country, with a presidential candidate. All eyes are on you, Tempe. You wanna make national news? This is how you're doing it, by killing kids. You're clear as gold in the shadows to do your job. What does that mean? You haven't been able to come up with a solution. We are bringing it to you tonight. You can fix this, start fixing it tonight. It starts with writing a resolution. You have the power, and that is your job, writing a resolution to get Officer Jean fired You have the power to write a resolution to get your chief of police, who is here present and has worn a smug face tonight that reminds me a lot of a [BLEEP] school boy that's been on the news. I feel like I'm seeing that face behind this podium all night, and it's been extremely disappointing and hurtful.
Expected.
Two resolutions you can write. You can begin to take accountability and unveil truths. Instead of trying to smear a child, you can start speaking truth and back to anything that's been said, because like Maria stated tonight, a lot has been unsaid that are facts. You can start taking accountability by doing your job and bringing policies to your city that are made to serve and protect the public, instead of serving protecting men in blue. They sign up for that job, and you sign up to protect us. Mayor Mitchell, I have words for you tonight. You dared to say, quote, "That this process thus far has been transparent and honest." When I read that, I sat at my desk and I choked back tears at work. Why? Because when a worried frantic parent reports their child is missing without, without knowing the truth for 10 hours? Sandra reported her son missing 10 hours before she knew any update. An officer sat with her in her home. Chief Moore, pretty sure you knew what was happening. You sent an officer to her home to watch over her as she thought she had a missing child report for 10 hours. In those 10 hours, Antonio was not deceased, he was sent to the hospital. You are all responsible for robbing a mother, of being with her dying son, and robbing her of her final goodbye. That opportunity existed. I want everyone here to recognize that. Sandra, as a mom, could have held her son in that hospital. She could have cradled him, knowing he'd be gone at the hands of an officer, but you stripped it away. You single-handedly stripped it away, and you were aware. And if the news reached any of you within those 10 hours, you stripped it away from her. That is unforgivable. You released limited video footage. How is that transparent and honest, Mayor? You held a witness? The department you overseen are responsible for. Held a witness and their family, even in cuffs without a search warrant while they went through for hours? Invading their privacy and their home when they were a witness? Is that following policy? Is that following rule and order the way you require all of us and expect us to do?
How about the Constitution?
Is that transparent and honest?
Nope.
That is what the city of Tempe's mayor says, that the process has been transparent and honest from the beginning, but the evidence, the facts are that it's been the complete opposite, and you have done nothing. Mayor, you also stated, quote, "That the nation should withhold judgment until investigations are concluded," quote. You said that, Mayor Mitchell. Do we think it's fair to say that Officer Jean, in those two minutes, held his judgment?
No, sir.
Did he follow protocol? Did he go through his head checking off protocol, investigating what was really happening? And I'm tired of this kid being called burglarizing a vehicle. It's an alleged ongoing investigation. How can you hold the public accountable, asking us to withhold judgment when the evidence is clear? We are smarter than you all think. You can say these words, but we see your actions or inaction. You all have blood on your hands, and I don't say that in any token of a way. You have a child's blood on your hands. Whether you've been on this board, or on this council, or are newly elected, I'm looking at a couple of you here who I receive emails from. Please remove me from any list from the city of Tempe after tonight, and don't ever, I hope I don't ever get any kind of requests until you start doing your job. The public is your boss. You're an elected official. Your funding comes from taxpaying dollars, and you need to start doing your job. We shouldn't have limited access to video when, when the media thinks you wanna fix [BLEEP] have access, because guess who pays for the body cameras? Whose video footage is that? It's collective. You said where you sit right now, chief? Because of the public. Every single one of you do. We live in a world today where a white male man can enter a bank and execute five women. But we all know, a Latino kid, a black kid, they see an officer, and they don't stand a chance, to the point of murder. These are facts, and the city of Tempe is now part of those facts. This is evidence-based. This is not questionable. And if you have any decency, dignity, if you're a parent, you better fucking say something. Say something, and I hope you take back your words, Mayor. Say something. Fire Officer Jean. Fire your chief of police. Write policies, and stop smearing this kid's name.
Hey, Ma, it's 3:00.
After Dan O'Neil, John O'Neil. And after John, whoever, Dean Robinson.
Postle Police Headquarters. Their number.
I wanna start by thanking everyone in the room for being here, and I hope, ladies and gentlemen, you listen to every single word that they say, and that goes for you I'm 70 years old, and I've been to way too many meetings like this over the years. Way too many meetings like this, where young people were shot down by police, and in this case, murdered. Martin Luther King once said something like this, "The biggest danger does not come from our enemy, the biggest danger comes from the silence of our friends." And I have friends on this city council, people who I call my friends, who I have known for many years, and you two are silent. And I don't believe you, Mayor, that you can't talk. We can get a resolution out of you today. We can get a resolution out of you right now to have that police officer fired and this chief resign. Now, you may not have the power to do it, but you can pass a resolution. So Randy, I call the question. If you give a resolution now, Lauren, I'm sure will second it. Otherwise, it's nothing but silence.
Do it right now. Do it right now.
John O'Neil?
You guys work on that. Work on that right now. We want a resolution, Randy. Right now.
Your citizen review board right here.
Dean Robinson?
She says she can't.
She can't, of course she can't.
Excuse me, I, uh, it's hard to hold back the tears. Hearing everybody, thank you for everybody for coming.
So why are we going off right now?
Of my skin being wiped, and I didn't have to do this.
I don't know if they're trying to cancel the meeting or something.
I do have a 15-year-old stepson, and he's half Mexican, and he doesn't have that religion.
Oh, she wants to get out of here.
When I hear about Antonio Arce, I just think about my stepson, and I think about coming home to an empty room, and the mother has to do that, and it just, it just brings me to tears every time. Maybe he didn't pull the trigger, and, and, but an officer did pull the trigger. And I think that anyone with, with a common sense can watch that video, and they can see that the police officer got out of his car not knowing what the situation was with his gun in hand, ready to shoot, already. He doesn't know what's going on. No crime has been committed. He comes to the, and he's already got his gun ready. He's hiding behind a crash cam, ready to shoot. Why? Is that, is that the policy? Is that the policy to have your gun out, ready to shoot?
Look at him. Look.
Look at it.
Is that the policy? Is that the policy to have your gun out, ready to shoot, right as soon as you, you don't know what's going on? You just see a person in a truck, not knowing if that's their truck, not knowing if that's their grandfather's truck, not knowing anything, just having the gun ready, ready to shoot? Soon as he runs out, boom! Is that the policy? I don't think so. Now, I don't know, you guys don't have the blood on your hands, but, but you will have the next one on your hands.
Yes.
Okay? It actually will have the next one on your hands. So a civilian review board with power to, to see these videos, and that anybody with common sense, of a law degree, I don't know what your police, uh, uh, I think anybody can tell that you, that this was not done correctly, it was not just. So for him to be paid, leave, is disgusting. For him to be, uh, uh, not in handcuffs is disgusting. But, but, uh, you have a chance to make it right.
Where are you going?
Restroom. We'll wait.
We'll wait.
Okay. Can we take five?
What do we want?
Justice!
What do we want?
Now!
What do we want?
Justice!
Yes, we don't get it?
Shut it down!
Shut it down!
Shut it down!
You wanna wait?
Yeah, yep, yep, yeah.
I'll be right back. Thank you. We'll wait two to five minutes.
Two or five minutes.
It's 8:16. Can you check this stuff?
What's your name and badge numbers?
Carvahal. My last name is C-A-R-V-A-J-A-L. Her name's Angel.
Why you all in the bathroom working on a resolution?
And yours?
Sonya Nwier, badge 660.
And the badge number of the officer that committed the felony?
I don't know.
Can you state the officer's name?
Officer Heinz is the officer that was involved in this altercation that we're talking about.
You wanna say something?
Not right now.
All right, now they're telling him what we can, can do, so that's refreshing. Got 500 people, well, 400 people watching her, so. So you guys can also check out Tempe Against Police Violence group, or Big Ant even if he's still. I forgot about my other camera. Yeah, I think they're aware. I gotta go use the bathroom too, but I'm not trying to get away. Okay, it's still going. What's that? Yeah. Yeah. What's that?
Have what?
Have what? Oh, not on me. Yeah. So we're heroic. Uh, we're all in the [INAUDIBLE]. Yeah, we're... Yeah, thank you much.
It's twenty, y'all got one minute.
I've been standing in my whole time.
You have to sit that way.
What's going on?
Once we get started, you have to sit back there.
I know, I need boused camera. But I'm in a chair, so. And he's trying to get me to, like, go sit, sit in the back. Unlawfully. He's just a G4S security guard. No legal authority.
Eight twenty-one.
They'll get up when, when they reconvene. What's your name?
Y'all seem to think this is a joke. Y'all seem to think we're playing games here. But I've come to let you know, we're not playing here. When a fourteen-year-old boy is murdered, all business comes to a halt. Until justice is served. Now, you are tired of all this, I can't do this. We can't do that. Let me tell y'all something. Some of y'all been in my inbox on Facebook. Privately talking about how bad this situation is. But we have not heard y'all publicly. Tonight, we demand, you, right there, I'm looking at you, to get a resolution written up tonight. And guess what? We have gone home. We're not letting up on you until we get a resolution. Let me tell you another thing too. How long are you gonna let her continue running a rogue police force? Huh? How long are you gonna allow her to do that? Antonio Arce is also your son. As leaders of Tempe, that is your child. Your child was murdered! Are y'all hearing me today? Your child was murdered! Turn your face and look at him. My child was murdered, because Antonio Arce is mine. Antonio Arce is all of ours. You are loud. You are loud! Our child is being murdered! And let me tell you about it. Today, we demand a resolution be written tonight. Tonight! A resolution will be written tonight!
Not tomorrow!
Not tomorrow! Not at ten o'clock tonight! But right now! Y'all start drafting up that resolution right now. I better see some parents. Y'all not listening, I better see some parents get to moving. Y'all think this is a joke? Give me a pen? My brother, you need a pen over there? Start writing! Start drafting up something! Start drafting up something! And we also demand that this officer be fired. And not only fired, but we want him charged! And not only do we want him charged, we want him in jail! The murderer who murdered Antonio Arce needs to be imprisoned, and you all need to let it, need to make sure that happens today. Today! Do you hear me? Today! Today! Start writing! Start getting something drafted up right now! Look, when we say no justice, no peace, there ain't gonna be no peace! That means you all will not be able to conduct business in peace! That means you all not be able to perform some battle in peace! No eating out in peace! Until there's justice for Antonio Arce! I swear to God! I swear to God! We better get something, draft it up tonight, or there won't be no peace. And that's not a threat, that's a promise!
Uh, Mr. William Robles?
Uh, my name is William Robles. Much of you very well-known to me. About one of you been used. Um, you know me very well. Lot of stuff that happens about anything, you guys are real aggressive about everything. You need to tell your officers to calm down. I'm here for solidarity for Dylan Smith, for Evelyn Howland, and for Antonio. I'm here for you. Now, for my business, what I'm here for is Darryl, uh, Road Parkway and Free Drive. You guys keep saying on your website, you guys gonna have a roundabout? Or you guys gonna have something, some type of cap or singles or something like that? Um, lot of people from Oaxaca, when they get off the bus, or when they walk towards Walmart, they always cross the street taking huge risks of being hit by cars. I mean, there's people with baby strollers. Illegal.
She's freaking, she's not ready.
It's a huge risk, it's a safety.
Oh, she wrote one more.
When are you guys gonna do your roundabout that you guys can stand on, uh, on the website?
I'll foil you.
If not, when are you guys gonna put a crossblock at Road Parkway and Free Drive? I gotta tell you.
Manuel? Gilbert Cruz? Former Gilbert is Mulaney Hardisty. Former Mulaney is Luke Black.
My name's Gilbert Cruz, I've been in Tempe pretty much my whole life. A lot of things that brought out tonight, Antonio was, you know, went to school early. Maybe he should have been in school. And the reason why maybe he wasn't in school is because there's not a lot of funds going to our school. Because although you might be able to sleep soundly tonight knowing you didn't pull the trigger, the decisions you guys make every time, to give a corporation a tax break, to give a developer a tax break, to give these multinational companies that come here and don't pay any taxes because you give them Jiplits and Upzones and whatever else, your private public schools are funds, and then this is what happens. He could have seen a social worker. Maybe if there was more money going into our public schools instead of funding ASU stadium, we'd stay far away. Maybe, maybe he got found with lots of resources. But Antonio needed help. Antonio needed help from the community, from the police, and instead he got a bullet in the back. And that's what he got. And that's why we're all here tonight. So, there needs to be a lot of things on the table, because a lot of things aren't on the table. What's never on the table is funding for the police associations, for the unions, with your relationships with the police, your non-stop tax breaks for the wealthy, the corporate welfare that you give out. That's never on the table. But what always is on the table is allowing these things to happen without resolutions, without a name on the face of what's actually occurring on the streets, what we deal with every day. So that's why we're all here tonight. And I really hope something comes out of this, because I know a couple of you are up for reelection next year. People are gonna come for your seats. There's already about ten people ready for those seats. So I would take into account, if you like public service, if you really care about what's going on, stop investing, stop letting people come here and not pay anything in taxes when our schools are failing, when our police are cutting down cops, police cutting down children. And when they get endless support, whether it's more militarization, where you guys are inviting hundred thousand dollar contracts to armed G4S out of public, uh, public parks? You're inviting this to happen. This is gonna keep happening. Every year, this is gonna happen. Our, our community is being militarized, and you're standing there giving the police more guns, no accountability, no training, more armored vehicles, giving them stingray devices where they're monitoring all your private communication. This needs a change. We need to have public civilian review boards. This officer needs to be prosecuted. And the funds from the prosecution and those lawsuits resulting in coming out of police pensions.
I'm taking Mulaney's time.
And then Luke Black? We have Drew Sanger.
I'd just like to say that you guys should do this sooner than later, because this was already trending on CNN. That's okay, I'll see you tomorrow. I mean, this is, this isn't something that's gonna go away. It's only gonna get bigger. And, you know, he's, so it's, where are we? The, no. I don't know where he went, but, um, I mean, it's only gonna get bigger from here. So, you have the choice to make a resolution sooner than later, or it's, it's gonna spread all over the nation, and you're gonna need.
Probably.
I'm ready to mobilize. And, yeah, I mean, it's, it's gonna get bad. I'm just letting you guys know. So, and you guys probably already know that, but I, I just wanted to say that, just because, you know, I follow, I'm sure you guys follow national news, but I, you know, we are all, we're not gonna go away. So I just wanted to say that again. I felt the need to say it's gonna start quote trending sooner than later. So, think on that.
Thank you. Luke Black? Former Luke, Drew Sanger?
I actually, uh, call bullshit on the whole charade. We're not here talking about, like, what was an accident. We're talking about the system that you and your predecessors have built. We're talking about 2016 in this room, talking about whether or not we were gonna criminalize homeless folks on Mill Avenue. We're talking about 2018, when we're talking about putting G4S private armed securities in our parks here in Tempe. You built this. This is the repercussion of your intentional decision to continue to build a violent police department in this city. Anything that comes out of this, any resolution, any policy change, will be a direct conflict to the intentional acts to build this violent police force that you have already built. I call bullshit on the charade that is you closing your eyes, that is the moment of silences, that is the leaning forward and the leaning back, that is the tears, that is the paying attention. It's bullshit. Because it's not your children. And I, I disagree with, you know, I respectfully disagree with my friend that that boy was not your boy. That boy was a brown boy. You are not brown. He was shot because he is a brown boy. Your children will not be shot because they are not brown boys. And so when we talk about next steps, when we talk about accountability, when we talk about policy change, we recognize that this moment of two and a half hours is the most that you all expected to have to pay for the consequences of the decision that you have made to get us to this point. You won't leave here and think about what you should do. Maybe you walk away and you think, what if this was my child? But it isn't your child. The police aren't shooting your children. We know the charade of this. How many times have drunk-ass white ASU students waved objects in the air? How many times have they thrown objects at police officers on white bread hot dogs? The officer got out of that car intent on shooting that boy. That was a policy decision that stems from decisions you are making. That you are making. What are you gonna do from this moment on? Who are you gonna be accountable to? I'm not asking you to do this for your children, because I recognize you don't have to. I'm asking you to make serious policy change, beginning with a, with an oversight committee of citizens that have subpoena power and power to criminally charge officers. That's gonna start. You have those decisions. There are members of this community that have a lot of really, really great policy decisions that you can put into practice starting now. Are you gonna listen to them? Or are you gonna walk out of this room, say you're sorry, or not say anything at all because your lawyers instructed you that anything you're saying can influence the case, or may be used against you in future litigation? What are you gonna do? There are members of this community that you can listen to, who will bring you policy. Will you have the courage to do that?
Captain Drew is Natalie? Captain Natalie is Sophia Natta?
My name is Luke Sangar. Um, I'm a data scientist. And I don't think I can provide you with any data about sentiment of the people, what they actually want. And what is being provided by leaders of the community is not sufficient. I mainly came here not to, you know, talk about what you have, desire to give me any sentiment feeling about myself, but I have, it's, it's, it's a type of thing. Had a fourteen-year-old kid dying, it's unhealthy for the community. As you can see, we're coming out with our anger, our, our negative emotions, and this leads to more police. So I really, really hope that the police department pick up this show. If it's needed, sooner than later.
Bless you.
I'll just, I just need Natalie. Sophia, you have some?
We can leave that time for that person, right? The person you called before? Because there's still some people who wanna speak.
Every time I turn my camera, she picks up her phone.
My name is Sarah. I'm a PhD student at ASU, and I don't feel safe in my community. But I have an opportunity for you. You already know the community feels sorry. You already know that we are happy with you. You already know that we are happy with you, and that we will remember this when elections come around. You already know about the long history of why communities of color don't trust you, because of the actions that your government has taken against us. So what's the opportunity here? I want you to prove us wrong. Prove that you do care. Prove that you are progressive. Prove that you aren't okay with murder. Prove us wrong that you care more for your community than the cops. Every time we bring up police brutality in Tempe, you keep telling us that you changed the police department, that you changed the chief of police, but we haven't seen any changes. In 2012, a report came out that said Tempe police was more racially discriminatory than Ferguson. Well, it's 2019, and we haven't seen an updated data ready list. Based on my research, it shows nothing has changed. So prove us wrong. We already know that when we send this case to the county, Bill McGottman, the conservative county attorney, is not going to do anything about it. He's gonna let that cop throw scot-free. We already know that. And I've also heard that this is the blue dot in the red state, right? We're the progressive city, right? Because you can see here the community is not quite convinced. So prove us wrong. Prove us that you will prosecute this cop. Don't send this case off to the attorney general. Don't pass responsibility to anyone else you know won't do justice. Prove us wrong and do what's right.
Sofia Natale? And after Sofia? And well, envelope? Here it is.
Hi, I'm Sofia. I live in Phoenix. We're here for Antonio. We're here for every citizen executed by Maricopa police. Fortunately, it takes a child being murdered to gain attention to the gross human rights abuses perpetuated by this county's police. I'm going to protect him, sir. This is not an isolated incident. It's systemic. They should be Blue Lives Matter more cultured. At the end of the day, consistently, nothing changes. Why? Because you see us as separate. You see us as criminal. You see us as less than. You mentioned a point in Time Count. With rising numbers of homelessness, all you need to do is spend 15 minutes with the street residents and populations to know that we have a mental health crisis on our hands. Instead, they're arrested. They're considered separate. They're considered criminal. They're considered less than. But police budgets continuously increase year after year without regard to social services our community desperately needs. Once again, we are separate. We are criminal. We are less than. And now it's become custom for cops to execute citizens, to execute children, without judge or jury. Dozens of people shot last year alone. Their story, we will never know. Antonio's story, we will never have the privilege of knowing. Instead, he was painted by Tempe police as separate, as criminal, as less than. Why? Because you guys don't truly represent us. Officer Jean was there for brief moments before deciding Antonio deserved to die. He needs to be fired. But he is one of many who believe they are above us, because of badge they wear. Why? Because they know, and the precedent has been set, the Blue Lives Matter more. It's apparent when your complexion warrants traffic stops. It's apparent when your skin color correlates to sentencing. It's apparent when simply running away equates to being a perceived threat. We need a civilian oversight board with the authorities to enforce better training, reallocation of police resources, and repercussions for murderous police conducted with sincere transparency. Thank you.
Ask a question? Joel Vida?
Ask you, if you ask your staff members to stay off their phones, if they put a gentleman here, close your fucking fingers, how we spit.
We're gonna FOIA all the phones.
Ben Cooper? Ben, sorry. Uh, my name is Ben Cooper. I'm a resident of Tempe. Anything I could say could really sum up the community's anger and feelings, other than they have already. But I just want to express that I do not think that this council can fix this problem. It is a problem inherent in policing. It is a problem inherent in government. It is a problem inherent in the fact that we feel the need to punish people instead of trying to help them. When nothing that has happened was necessary, it didn't need to happen, nobody is helped by it, okay? The officer who arrived, he did not have to chase Antonio. He could have just left. He seriously thought that his life was in danger. He can get in his car and go away. There's no reason to chase after people, okay? It's not, even if somebody had committed a crime, it does not help just to chase after them and try to put them in prison. It doesn't change any of the underlying problems. We need to focus on getting rid of the police, and the police are not carrying weapons. The fact that police are always carrying weapons when they're walking around, just like on their regular patrols, shows that they believe that the solution to these problems is violence. They show that they are willing to kill people just while they're like carrying out the regular duties of their jobs by carrying weapons. We do not need to kill people. We do not need to point guns at people, okay? Like, not, just like a few days ago, Tempe police pointing an assault rifle at somebody who was squatting on a roof of a building, just like on Apache. It's just unbelievable. Like, what harm comes from that? Like, yeah, it might be annoying that some people do certain things we don't like, but nobody should be shocked for those things. It's fucking ridiculous. I think, I, there's no reason to believe that any of these reforms are gonna change the underlying problems. I remember, like, four years ago, when people were talking about how body cameras were going to fix all these problems we have, because it would create accountability, and that's fucking bullshit, okay? It's bullshit. We've seen how the police, they, people are going to take, like, a lot of people are just gonna take their word, and there's nothing we can do about that, all right? Like, having the body camera footage isn't gonna change that. Having a civilian review board, that might help get somebody indicted, but we've seen time and again that juries are willing to acquit police, prosecutors are willing to go easy on them. The problem is the police.
Yes.
We need to get rid of them. They're evil, violent, all, okay? Get rid of the fucking police.
Next is Joel Vida. And after Joel, we have Ricky Mohammed.
I'm Ricky, thirty dollars, not here. My name is Ricky Mohammed. I represent a group called Taking Out Tomorrow, as well as a member of the Nation of Islam. And we stand in solidarity with the people, because this is one of the most arrogant, pompous... Don't give a damn groups I don't concede in my life. You can sit there with your hands on each hand like you just died, I wanna go home. You know what I'm saying? You, you don't even count. Come on, man, this is ridiculous. You know, this is absolutely the worst scenario I've seen. Elected official who say they're gonna help, and they don't give a damn, okay? This is a privileged city, okay? And they don't give a damn about nobody who goes to ASU and they're moguls and deadies and send and pay three times the amount of food, three times the amount of price for anything here in ASU. That's how they get here. That's why we're sitting up here. So we need to take it to the next stage. If they don't write this resolution, okay? Think beyond now. Because you know what they're gonna do, not a damn thing. So now we've got to mobilize and think, think. Not like other cities, waiting for the same result, no matter what city it is, for them to come back and say you acquitted.
Yeah, I know.
No, it's time now that you understand that you can't continue.
She knows she can resign.
I'm a black man. I know to walk through Tempe circumspect.
That'd be the easy thing to do.
I know I pay attention to every one of your motorcycle when I'm walking up here. Why you got upstairs right here? I'm beat down like I was committing a crime. This is how I walk as a black man in Tempe, Arizona, because this is for the rich and the privileged, okay? I have no rights, okay? That's just reality. So I'm not even gonna waste my time saying you're gonna do something, I know better, okay? Sixty-one years of living in Arizona, and this is the worst people I've ever seen on the couch. Everybody know he stood in solidarity.
You can start writing something. Then I'm gonna write down. I don't see no hands up there moving. Real concerns, not doing a damn thing.
Put it on the agenda. You know you don't plan to have another public meeting until February 28th. That's far too damn long.
That's way too damn long. We're not going home.
Put it on the agenda.
Still a lot of people here.
And I would love to tell you guys that today I went to go pick up this little sister, this eight-year-old sister. And she saw a police officer. And she was too scared to go by. I really didn't mean raising our kids, telling them that they should be scared of a police officer. They shouldn't. They were supposed to protect us. It's not fair. You guys aren't doing anything. You guys haven't done anything, and we're still waiting. Why is an eight-year-old, an eight-year-old little girl supposed to be scared of an officer? It's not fair. This is a 14-year-old boy. All, but all kids make mistakes. Does that mean that he had to get shot? Did the officer really have to take his life? You guys need to get your shit together and do something. You guys haven't done anything, and we're tired of waiting. But just keep in mind that there's little kids that are running around and are scared of our officers when they should be feeling safe when they walk near ones, not scared for their lives.
All right, that's all the cards. Anyone else like to speak? Please go, speaker's card, please.
Atlantis?
I know you're so familiar.
Atlantis. And I'm hearing and I'm seeing your pictures up here, and I remember, right? Like, that one of the biggest threats we have is white supremacists. One of the biggest threats we have in our life is you. I've walked for you, nambled, made calls for you, all of you. The last, since 2010 that I've been involved, all of you have profited from our work. From our son, from our peers.
Timeless, I'll return, let's get some shots real quick.
And you get to sit up there and think you're saying progressive shit. That's all you do. You say progressive things. You're not progressive. You go out and speak against gun violence. This is gun violence. You go out and go to women's march and go and speak for women. Sandra is a mother who violence has been upon at your hands. Don't march at the women's march while you ignore the pain of Sandra. You say you speak for children. Antonio was a kid. He had just turned 14. You say your pro-education and your marching and Red for Ed and all that stuff, right? We're there too, but we actually live it. And then you try to smear the fact that Antonio was not in school, but don't condemn the fact that that school pushed him out.
Right, absolutely.
You had a lot of opportunities. You say you can't. You couldn't make a statement. There was a lot of opportunities for you to show up. We were out here two weeks ago. We were in the alleyway by Antonio's blood on the street. All his mom and his dad kneeled in a place where their son was killed. We were at a viewing, where everyone was welcome, where you were invited to. And y'all didn't show up. You actively didn't show up. You actively don't do anything. You don't act. You can't continue to say these things that make you sound good and make you feel good and make you get the, you know, progressive cookies and do nothing. We demand the officer to be fired immediately.
Immediately.
We demand his chief to be fired immediately. The least you can do is name a park that was right in front where this child should be playing after him. That should be Antonio Park, immediately. You owe the community for the trauma that you've caused. You get to go home, and you're done. They're in pain. They're crying. They've been hospitalized and now have hospital bills because of the pain and of the moment when they found that their son has been killed. And they continue to go back. You need to pay those bills. You need to pay for that funeral cost. You're harassing a witness and the family. You broke a woman's iPad or tablet, took evidence from without warrants.
Cover up. Criminals. Mafia.
You let this family call the phone number, call Antonio's phone for several hours. Text messages.
Monsters.
Where it said, "Mom on the phone." You didn't answer it. You didn't tell the mom that she could go to the hospital. Mom didn't get to say goodbye to her baby. She didn't get to go...
Are those crooked that was here?
And hug him one last time. Because then the body was taken, and by that time, it was too late for them to go to the hospital. And they had to wait until the viewing. They had to wait until they got the body back. You don't get to do this shit no more. It's time to ask where you're gonna be at. What are you gonna do? And so before we leave, we wanna hear what are you going to do? Because we already started hearing and getting messages of all the things you can't do. Those all sound like excuses. So what the hell are you going to do? What do we want? Justice! When do we want it? Now! What do we want? Justice! When do we want it? Now!
Y'all just start tracking.
Amy Lynn?
We wanna hear from you, mayor. What are you gonna do?
What are you gonna do?
What are you gonna do? And will you pay to sit there? What are you gonna do?
After the meeting is convened, you can then speak as private citizens, right? Can you guys just then speak to us after the meeting is convened?
There's your words.
Yes, he's saying yes. He's saying yes.
First off, my name's not Amy Lynn, I think I do. And first off, I just wanna say, I am really proud of the community for getting together and being able to stand in solidarity with the family of Antonio. Because I hated hearing about Darren Holland years back, and I hated hearing about Antonio's mother, Antonio's murder. And the pain that his family must feel is insurmountable, and you can never get that back. You can never get his life back, and you've taken away the life and the happiness of the family. And yet, y'all still try to demonize him, try to justify this murder. You tried to spin him as this burglar. You tried to pin him as all these different things and this criminal, but he was just a kid. And we all know that. And one thing is that Blue Lives don't exist. Y'all get to take off your badge at the end of the day, but black and brown people, they're black and brown 24/7, 365 days a week for the rest of their goddamn lives. And you get to go home to your kids, and you get to say goodbye and goodnight every single day. And yet, these people are living in fear until the system changes, until something happens. And innocent people are killed or jailed, when in reality, they just need help. And especially, a 14-year-old boy should never be seen as a criminal. And Sylvia, you are one of the biggest cowards I have ever seen in my entire life. I didn't understand all that other bullshit, and like, being able to justify all this shit. And like, we demand that you be fired, that the officer be fired, and that all of you do something about this before this happens again, because we cannot see these numbers keep rising.
I can touch it, Mark.
Yeah.
It's not that hard.
You're looking down. Well, keep listening.
We see this anger, and we're here because we're angry. But we're also here out of love for the community and for the family. And together, we're standing. And together, we're demanding change. If y'all don't give it to us, we're going to take it.
Yes! We will get it, we will get it.
Good job, Victor. Leo?
Hi, I'm Victor Leon. I'm from Phoenix. And I just need to say that you guys are doing a whole job that I can't even get. A little bit younger than I am, and already I'm saying that you guys don't give a shit about him. Because I go to some of the schools that are far down in Phoenix that are rated some of the worst schools. And you want to know what? Like, even then, I'm not scared of them. You want to know why? You want to know why? Because I know that underneath all that, there's just a normal person. A normal person that can get messed up in some easy ways. All that you're giving them is just a bunch of weapons so that they can go and start hurting people so that they can feel confident. But in reality, they don't need that. What you need to do is you need to start putting more money into the schools to start telling people to actually start putting effort into their students. Like, I go to school every day. Ain't nobody ever asking me how I'm feeling or what's going on. There's no counselors at my school. All that I have to deal with is a bunch of anger that builds up. Like, right now, I'm holding in a lot of anger. I've been holding in a lot of tears. I'm bipolar. So right now, I can go crazy out of nowhere and they have to stop me. And I go into MMA, so I'm pretty sure I can get him on the ground before you can get me on the ground. And then he'd have to go over here and call his little friend, and then one of the ones up there would have to call. So you guys really do need to consider what you guys are doing, and you need to start doing something about it. Thank you.
Shut it down?
Yeah!
How about that resolution?
So what are you guys going to do?
How far along are you? Take away the times.
No, what are you guys going to do?
You know what you're doing.
No more dollars.
Ready to walk away now?
No, we're listening to you, trust me. We're very...
We don't trust you.
Okay, well, I'm trying, okay? We care about you guys. We care about who your voices are. We certainly listen to you. That's what we do. We want to listen to you. State law does prohibit us from speaking, responding to stuff.
Right, state law. Laws are made.
State law says you can't hurt a fourteen-year-old child?
And you're not... We are...
Can I go kill a fourteen-year-old today?
You know, this is, as I've stated before, this is a very unfortunate situation.
Unfortunately.
Preventable. I'm preventable.
I will be honest with you. We are here to listen to you. We care about the change, and we want this.
This man is approaching.
What do we want? Justice! What do we want it? Now! What do we want? Justice! What do we want it? Now! What do we want? Justice! What do we want it? Now! What do we want? Justice! What do we want it? Now! Justice! What do we want it? Now! If we don't get it... Shut it down! We don't get it... Shut it down! We don't get it... Shut it down! No justice! No peace! No justice! No peace! No justice! No peace! No justice! No peace! What do we want? Justice! What do we want it? Now! What do we want? Justice! What do we want it? Now!
Listening!
We ain't going home.
And we're staying. We ain't going home. Needs to resign, Chad. Now, Lieutenant Edward Lomet.
You got to wake up.
You're not staying, and you are not staying.
Fire Sylvia now! 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 Fire Sylvia now!
Where are you going? We want a resolution right now.
You're asleep in the carpet. We are not going to you.
We want a resolution right now.
What do we want? Justice! What do we want it? Now! What do we want? Justice! What do we want it? Now! What do we want? Justice! What do we want it? Now! What do we want? Justice! What do we want it? Now! What do we want? Justice! What do we want it? Now! What do we want? Justice! What do we want it? Now!
You can resign.
Oh my God, I don't care to die.
We want power! Shit, keep shit! Shit, keep shit!
Justice!
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 You will get no peace!
Shame on you, bitch! No peace!
What I'm trying for you!
Hey! Hey!
Shame! 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 Shame!
That's why I was asking you here. Dallas, Phoenix, and San Diego are...
Fire him!
Shame! 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 Shame!
Watch out.
Shame!
Hey, don't touch me! Don't touch me. Don't touch me. Don't even touch. Done.
Shame! 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 Shame!
Fire her! Fire her!
Get the fuck out of here. This is our city council now. We will be back at the next meeting.
Why don't we propose a resolution?
This is our city council.
Alright, let's propose a resolution.
Let's propose a resolution right now.
Yeah, do their job.
What do we want it?
It's ours.
Justice! What do we want it? Now! What do we want? Justice! What do we want it? Now! What do we want? Justice! What do we want it? Now!
And if we don't get it...
Shut it down!
And if we don't get it...
Shut it down!
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 Shut it down!
Shut it down!
Mic check. Mic check. Mic check.
Mic check.
Mic check.
Mic check.
Hey, buddy.
Thank you.
I'd like to say a word before we all leave.
So let's just, uh, some of the family members are here. I'm going to honor them. Alright, so February fifteenth marks the month that a family will not happen with it. On that day, Friday, February fifteenth, we will be out here on Millout in the middle of the day. And we will let...
That's the one who's leaving.
One of their most famous, one of their most tragic areas know that Antonio, justice will be served. So on February fifteenth, please be on the lookout for Facebook invite. We will be out here. And on February twenty-eighth, we will be back here again in every single city council meeting after that until we have justice for Antonio.
We need to share. We need to pay to give events, we need to share that. We need to build, we need to be thousands. Today was powerful. They were scared. They left. But they don't get to do this bullshit anymore. They don't get to call themselves progressives until our little ones, I get to sit there and say all the shit that they can do. Today was powerful. We need to continue to come back. We need to come back with more people. And on the fifteenth, we're going to be on the streets.
They're public napkins.
Because they cannot rest. And someone said it, right? We have a group of people that wants to follow the events, that to follow the council, the mayor to lunch, to their events. So they don't have peace either.
Nobody gets to eat in peace.
No justice!
We have no peace!
No justice! No peace!
So, for the Sillon Espanol, uh, February fifteenth, vamos estar, vamos hacer la marcha por Antonio and por todas otras familias. Vamos estar aquí en Millout. Vamos hacer el evento de Facebook. Uh, por favor, queremos que seamos miles de personas. Y vamos a regresar a esas juntas porque no pueden hacer, no se vale que sigan haciendo lo que usted diga, muy progresistas, democratas, de lo que sea. Y que vengan aquí, sigan haciendo la misma violencia que siempre. So, from the fifteenth, we'll be there every... Muchas gracias. Thank you very much. There are the police.
There is a group of police officers outside. We do not know their actions. We do not know their intentions.